2022 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes Nenisha Bay, whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Nenisha Bay and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and contribute to this land in our community. Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Eke?
Here.
Commissioner Ronan is absent. Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
At this time, we are going to administer the oath of office to Commissioner Chapman.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I, Brian Chapman,
that I, Brian Chapman,
will support the constitutions of the United States of America.
Will support the constitutions of the United States of America.
The state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
And the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner.
On behalf of all of the citizens of the city.
On behalf of all the citizens of the city.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I have a proclamation to read. Once the proclamation is done, we will be have a wonderful tribute to by the Union Creek Singers today. At that time when they begin, we will ask everyone to stand. Whereas in 2010, the state of Michigan, the county of Isabella, and the city of Mount Pleasant recognized the official boundaries of the Isabella Indian Reservation through a historic set of agreements. And whereas these historic agreements acclimately settled longstanding Indian country jurisdictional issues and are now considered model agreements. And whereas the city of Mount Pleasant desires to demonstrate and celebrate its strong and productive relationship with the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribal Council based on a mutual respect and trust. And whereas the idea of Indigenous People's Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas the city has proclaimed and recognized Indigenous People's Day every year since 2014. And whereas Indigenous People's Day is an opportunity to educate about pre-existing Indian cultures that have survived an often violent colonization process and continue to exist and thrive in the present-day America. And now, therefore, I, Amy Perschbacher, mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim the second Monday in October Indigenous People's Day every year henceforth. And further, the city supports the Indigenous People's Day to be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people on this land and to celebrate the thriving culture and value that the Saginaw-Chippewa and other indigenous peoples add to our city and community. And further, the city of Mount Pleasant Commission recognizes the value of working collaboratively together with the Saginaw-Chippewa Tribal Council and looks forward to addressing areas of mutual concern in our community. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand in the great seal of the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this 10th day of October 2022. All right, thank you. At this time, we are going to, I'm going to ask if there's any additions or deletions to the agenda. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I move.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. The agenda has been approved. At this time, we will look at input from the public. If you would like to step forward and speak on any of the agenda items, you may step to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you are joining us from Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine. And if you're joining Zoom by telephone, you'll be moved into the meeting and asked to state your name and address before you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, there is not.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Not seeing anyone in the audience, I'm going to close the public input. Manager of Descent, can you please go over the petitions and communications?
Yes. Received petitions and communications includes monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received and minutes of the Traffic Control Committee from September.
All right. Are there any consent items that the commission would like removed from the consent calendar and placed in the agenda? Seeing none, manager of dissent, can you please go over the consent items?
Yes. Consent items includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held September 26, 2022. Consider contract with Great Lakes Concrete Restoration, Inc. for the Apparatus Bay Floor Restoration Project for a cost of $32,000. And consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right. Can I have a motion to accept the consent calendar items as presented?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor to accept the consent items as presented, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right. At this time, we will move on to our one and only public hearing tonight. Our public hearing is on an ordinance to add a chapter to 116, a chapter 116, add to chapter 116 to title nine, Business Regulations for the City's Code entitled Electric Scooters and Skateboards, and consider approval at the same time. Manager of Descent.
The city commission is being presented with an ordinance for consideration that would allow for scooter and skateboard rental companies similar to bird and lift services to operate within the city limits. The ordinance makes requirements of the operating companies, including companies would need a license to operate such businesses within the city limits. Such licenses will require the owner provide contact information, proof of insurance, and information about the units being used. Scooters will need to operate in a safe manner such as having kickstands, working parts, and units that limit speeds to no greater than 25 miles per hour. Operators of these units will need to comply with a list of regulations such as keeping speeds under 10 miles an hour on sidewalks, staying to the right of street lanes, and not using units while intoxicated. The ordinance does not allow for units to be placed or remain in areas impeding traffic, bus stops, sidewalk areas impeding pedestrians, in front of fire hydrants, or other nuisance areas. Retrieval of the units will be subject to a fee set by a resolution. Companies operating within the city limits will need to provide data information as set out in the ordinance. This will be a way for the city to track and to track the use and abundance of these units.
As I stated, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the public would like to come forward and state their support or opposition, you may come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If there's anyone joining us by Zoom for the public hearing, you will be use your raised hand feature or star nine. If you're joining Zoom by phone, you'll be allowed into the meeting where you'll be asked to state your name and address before be given five minutes. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this public hearing? Is there anyone in Zoom?
No, there is not.
All right. I do not see anyone out here that wishes to speak at this time. So I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions or need clarification by the staff before we move into full discussion. Nope, okay. Is there any? Is there a motion to accept the ordinance?
I move.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right. We have a motion to accept the ordinance and a second. Is there any further discussion on this ordinance? Any questions? Yes.
I feel like the last meeting, we had a chance to do that, so I'm comfortable moving forward if you are.
Commissioner Eke?
I agree. I appreciate the work that manager of desents and the staff, you know, have done on this to delineate, you know, the guidelines. Because I was worried about the guidelines last time. So this is thorough. So I'm happy that we have done this.
Are there any more comments or questions? All right. We have a motion on the floor in a second. We will take a roll call.
Commissioner Ronan is absent. Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. We'll move on to new business. We consider a resolution in support of expanding the developmental district, licensed development district and revised off-premise and on-premise liquor license policy. Manager of desents.
Thank you. This policy or this proposal for the city commission is to consider an expansion of the district for development liquor licenses. This will increase the availability for more businesses to apply for a development liquor license. This proposal actually was developed by downtown development director Michelle Sponseller. She had put this together. So I really wanted her to present to the city commission. So if I can have her come up.
Yes.
Good evening. We have had a redevelopment district downtown in the northern section of Mission Street since 2011. Redevelopment liquor licenses have existed in the state of Michigan since 2006. Recently, we had a new, well, an existing business owner who was looking to expand operations and came to us looking for a liquor license. Could not find one for sale in all of Isabella County. And so amongst us in staff level, we said, why not expand the redevelopment liquor license district, which is called a development liquor license. It's a little wordy there. We saw no reason why not. In the last, let's see, 11 years, we have had four of these licenses issued. It's based on level of investment, public and private investment within the district. And then the individual business who is looking for a license must have a minimum of $75,000, meeting seating requirements before they can even go to the state level. So this was an opportunity for us to be more responsive to our business community. And we thought it was an excellent idea, one step forward in that direction.
Excellent. Do we have any other questions? Vice Mayor?
Do you see an impact of this beyond this one approval?
Certainly could. Once we have, if it's approved this evening, then we can get the word out throughout the community that this is available. Over the last 11 years, we've had many people interested in them. There's a few different reasons why you might want to go the more traditional route. It can be viewed as an asset sold if you desired to close your business or retire, something like that, where the redevelopment liquor licenses are surrendered back to the state. So sometimes there might be a desire to wait it out a little bit. But overall, it's just, as we say, another tool in the toolbox for folks. So no one else beyond this one particular business has expressed interest, but I think time will tell.
And then we still have a minimum for the county?
Oh, quota licenses?
Quota license.
Correct, correct, yes. It's based on the population. There are many different licenses that can be provided outside of that quota license. Some are resort licenses. Some are this redevelopment liquor license, hotels, things like that. Correct.
Commissioner Eke?
I just, I want some clarity here. So in the cost section, you indicate that the estimated cost of the project is $79,497.59. And a certain percentage of this will be covered by or will be an assessment to the homeowner. And then the rest would be covered by the city. Is this a one-time assessment? Or in light of the question that Commissioner Alsager asked, which I also wanted to ask, will there be additional assessments each time, you know, somebody applies?
I believe the issue that you're talking about is the next one on the agenda.
Uh-oh, did I go too early?
Yeah, we're talking about the liquor license.
You were too excited to talk about it, that's all.
I am thinking costs. I was just simply thinking of the costs of implementing this. All right, so I'll wait till we get to that one.
But while you're talking about costs, I can go through that. That's not a problem. Not a special assessment, but in this particular case, these liquor licenses are done, as I said, public and private investment. So there must be a minimum of $200,000 within the district. That's not difficult to get to in these areas. On top of that, the restoration of rehabilitation of the building has a minimum of $75,000.
Okay.
Seating of 25 people is a minimum. Above that is great. And then the cost of the liquor license is $20,000 payable to the state of Michigan. That's not set by us, just to be clear.
The state set that?
The state sets that, correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct. We are not looking to make any changes to the overall process, so everything else remains in place. A special use permit is still required, so that goes to the planning commission. And then obviously, that would come to the city commission as well for final approval before it goes to the state of Michigan.
Okay. Thank you for realigning me, so to say.
Happy to help.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to, as it's written.
And I have a second.
All right. So we have a motion to support the expanding, in support of expanding the development district, licensed development district and revise the off-premise and on-premise liquor license policy. And we have support. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, we're going to move on to Commissioner Eke's special. Number nine. Consider Resolutions 1 and 2 to commence the proceedings for special assessment, tentatively determine the necessity, and set a public hearing for October 24, 2022 regarding the necessity of a special assessment district 322. Manager of desents.
Yes. So the city received a petition from property owners for the reconstruction of the alley between Fancher and Kidney Streets, which connects Lincoln and Chippewa. A map of the area has been included in your city commission packet. Per the city's policy, the homeowners will pay a special assessment for 70% of the reconstruction of the project. And the city's capital improvement millage will pay for the remainder. The city's engineers estimate the project to cost $79,497.59. The homeowner portion to be subject to special assessment is estimated to be $55,648.32, with the remaining $23,849.28 to be paid by the city. At this time, the city commission is asked to consider the attached resolutions. The resolutions determine the necessity of the project and set a public hearing on the proposed special assessments for October 24, 2022.
Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Eke?
So how many homeowners are we looking at here?
All right, let me just jump back to my map.
Well, I'm looking at this, you know, just so that I'm not confused again. And I apologize for conflating the two.
Yeah. So we do have five properties that are subject to the special assessment.
Did I miss where you stated that?
We do have it on the map as well as the list of properties as well, too, which include the particular addresses to be assessed, the foot frontage, and then the cost per foot front.
Okay. I see that. Okay. And so my assumption is that when it comes to the assessment, since this is a collective assessment, it will be shared by the homeowners?
That's correct.
I suppose, okay, just so one person doesn't come in howling that, you know, screaming that they have been, you know, assessed far more than anyone else.
Yeah. And correct. And I do just want to state, too, that the homeowners actually had requested the special assessment and the reconstruction of the alleyway as well, too.
Cool, all right.
And they're all aware of the cost?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay. So, since, sorry.
Go ahead.
So since this is an estimate, what happens if the costs comes in much higher, given the current increase in material costs and a whole range of things happening?
Yeah. Let me, if I can, ask that question to our finance director, Mary Ann Kornexel, because I want to make sure that we're speaking true to what our policy is. Director Kornexel, would you be able to answer that question?
Yes, I can. We'll be bidding this project in the spring. And then if it's significantly higher, we'll bring it back to you again. If it's just slightly higher, we'll just assess the difference. But the engineering staff has added a percentage factor for inflation. And hopefully, they've added enough. And hopefully, we've overestimated, which is usually the case. They usually come in less than our estimates because we like to do our estimates a little bit on the high side. There's a lot of uncertainty. But you're correct in this bidding environment. But we'll know more when we go to bid it in the spring.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Oh, this was just a comment that I walked it the other day on a walk. And the block to the north of this one is in just as bad a shape. and the block to the north of this one is in just as bad a shape.
All right. Do we have a motion for the two resolutions and to set a public hearing?
I move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, motion carries. Now we move on to announcements on city-related issues and new business. At this moment, I am going to appoint Commissioner Bush to the principal shopping district. She will replace Commissioner Ronan's seat. If any commissioners have anything that they would like to bring forward or announce, this would be the time to do it. Commissioner Bush?
This is county adjacent, but still relevant. Wednesday evening, Isabella County Parks and Rec will be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for their new launch landing at Deerfield County Park. Completion on a few different landings happened this summer.
Vice Mayor Alsiger?
Also on Wednesday night, the group Women Who Care in Isabella County, they've changed their meeting night to be on Wednesdays, four times a year. So it's this Wednesday at Commission on Aging at 7:00. And it's, they've already chosen the three nonprofits that are going to be considered for the donations. And so this is called the Giving Night.
Commissioner Ake?
This is just, this is not an announcement so much as it is to say thanks to the city and to the commissioners for recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. It is important, and I am an Indigenous person, you may not know that, but it is important because we have to recognize the harm that certain historical moments caused people. And in this case, since we're talking about Indigenous Peoples' Day in the United States, we do, it is important to recognize the harm that colonization and various acts of genocide, including the Indian Removal Act, and the boarding school projects or processes caused Indigenous people. But it is also equally important to recognize the fact that Indigenous people have contributed to this land, to this culture, not just simply in terms of managing it, but also in terms of the cultural productions and the expansion of the civilization of the Americas, and that they have continued to contribute. And that Indigenous people, like a number of minority groups, continue to suffer affected by a whole range of policies. So because we live on Indigenous Peoples' land, I am saying this for the record that I am grateful to the city, and I'm happy that we have done this and that we continue to do this, but that it is not just simply lip service, that we do something proactively to make sure that we honor and we acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' contributions, and we work towards healing, and we also respect, you know, the cultures. So the fact that it took more than 20 years for the United, in fact, the United Nations to proclaim the rights of Indigenous people in 2007 is significant. One of the items for the UN is that Indigenous people have the right to sovereignty and to the celebration of their cultures and the practicing of their religion. Native Americans were not allowed to practice their religion for a long time. It would take till the 1970s for them to do that. I don't know who else, how many people know that. But I'm saying this because it is important for me, and it is as somebody who is Indigenous, but also as somebody who lives in this city, that we remember these issues and that we work towards healing. So thank you for giving me the space to say this.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? Commissioner Bush?
I was looking up the correct time, and I apologize, I don't have the correct time, but I believe that a week from tomorrow is the Rotary Auction, and Rotary does a lot for our community. But I don't have the time.
Anyone else?
Right? Yeah.
I'd like to. I'd let everyone know that Grease will be performed at the Broadway Theater on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this week, and Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of the next week. And the week after that will be Rocky Horror Picture Show. So if you are into Grease, that's what you want to see, and if you're into Rocky, that's where you want to go. Any other announcements? All right, at this time, I'm going to open the floor for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to come forward and speak, you may step forward to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're using your phone. You'll be led into the meeting, then state your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak at this time? No raised hands. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? All right, I do not see anyone in the audience. At this time, because we do have a workshop, we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we will be back at 7:45 for our workshop. And if you, anyone that's in the audience wishes to stay, stick around, we'll be talking about the operating budget. We'll take a 10-minute recess.
While they have the broken
Are you worrying about
Oh, no, no, it's just a hill. It's over the sand.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Maybe you get a sticker made, just put one in the bow or at the back and say, you know, you're not sporadic or
All right, we are back in session. At this time, we are going to have a presentation. By the S, are we having a presentation by you first? Oh, good.
T up?
Okay.
Just being golf.
Cover a few things here, and you will go into more of the numbers.
All right, then we will let manager dissents start.
Perfect. So I just wanted to give the city commission a little bit of an education on the process, what goes into the budget, the goals and objectives that we budget based on, and then also talk about some of the challenges and how we met those challenges for this 2023 budget. So the process starts with the city commission goals and objectives. We start that off in March. Those goals and objectives then go to the departments. They submit their proposed budgets to the city manager in early, well, in spring, essentially. Manager then reviews those budget requests against the city commission goals and what we're trying to do that year in July and August. Budget with prioritized objectives is presented to the city commission for consideration and alteration. So we presented that budget to the city commission in September, and now we're having a meeting this evening. We'll also have another work session at our next October meeting. And the budget is typically adopted by the city commission in November and then implemented in the following fiscal year. Goals and objectives for this particular budget include maintaining stable and financially responsible operations, continue positive and productive relationships with community partners and resident and businesses, provide safe accommodations for pedestrians and bicyclists, create a community-friendly space in our downtown area, provide a great park system, and expand our sports events and recreation program offerings. Create a sense of place by promoting the meet-year branding and working to become a cool destination, addressing the housing market demands in our community, including homeownership opportunities, maximize economic viability on Mission Street, and prepare the Mountain Pleasant Center property for future development opportunities. Challenges with 2023. Of course, 2022, the big thing that we had was inflation. Consumer Price Index peaked over the summer at 9%, and while that was 9% to the average homeowner, we saw a lot of our contracts, a lot of our services come in at 15, 20, even up to 30% above what our estimates were. Some of those we were able to apply value engineering to, were able to trim down the project a little bit to bring it more within our anticipated costs. But some of them, we just couldn't do that with, and so we had to eat the extra cost. We had to use more of our funds in order to address those needs. Unforeseen capital expenses. For 2023, there are two projects in particular that the city had not necessarily planned on doing. That was the, or is, the reconstruction of the retaining walls here at City Hall, as well as the replacement of the M20 pedestrian bridge. Those two projects together are over $900,000. Again, something that the city was not able to plan long-term into the future, and they do have a critical need for being replaced in 2023. Michigan tax tribunal cases. Right now, the city is arguing, or in the process of moving forward with arguments regarding a number of multifamily residential homes. Essentially, the owners of these properties are saying that they have less people to rent to, therefore their income is not as high, therefore their value is lower. If that value comes down, their taxes, property taxes are directly tied to that, and we would see a decrease in those property taxes. On the other side, mostly residential homes, typically that value is driven from home sales. And while home sales have been very high, the amount of value that is under dispute with the cases to the Michigan tax with the cases to the Michigan tax tribunal really mean that we have to budget essentially no growth from 2022 to 2023 if those properties are awarded a significant reduction in value. So, that certainly hampers our ability to move forward to meet some of those issues. And then also, of course, lower population. Unfortunately, with a lower population, that does mean in the future we'll see lower shared revenue from the state of Michigan. While we're made whole in 2023, there's no promise moving forward from there. That also means less Act 51 or less roads funding for us as well, too. Despite this, I think we're able to address the challenges with this budget. For one, the use of fund balance to sustain the budget. This does provide an offset for the increased capital expenses that we're experiencing in 2023. We have a couple of other projects in 2024, but I still feel very optimistic about moving forward through that fiscal year as well. Refocus operations on maintaining current assets versus expansion at this time. A number of proposals came through from the department budgets that had to be left on the cutting room floor, things that we said, we'll have to come back to this in 2024 or beyond. We've certainly find value in a lot of these projects that the departments want to move forward with, but now is not the time for us to be able to expand the system, more or less we want to focus on maintaining what we have. Focus on using in-house talent to achieve outcomes versus a reliance on consultants, leveraging technology for cost savings, and reshaping future operations to be more cost-effective. This really is just a look at utilizing, again, our in-house talent, what technology we have available, trying to do things differently versus relying on consultants and outside help. So, with that, I would say we are delivering a budget for fiscal year 2023 that is in great shape. We meet all of our financial obligations, and we end the year with a fund balance that is higher than our minimum required fund balance per our fund balance policy. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Finance Director Chris Saladin. He's going to take us through a high-level view of the budget, especially focusing on the general fund, and he'll talk about those fund balances as well, too.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you for commission, commission for the opportunity to come and talk about what we're going to do in 2023. So, one thing that you'll notice if you were to compare this budget to last year is we made some changes in how the funds are displayed. Basically, due to some of our funds that we previously budgeted as special revenue funds, not meeting all of the requirements of a special revenue fund, and some of it gets squishing, it's a judgment call. We really took this opportunity to look at, you know, as close as we could follow Gatsby. And so, this budget combines the capital improvement fund, the special assessment fund, and the block grant fund with the general fund. And for the same purposes, recreation's now an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund is where the activities of the fund should basically fund, at least mostly, all of the activities related to the programming. And so, if you compare the two, you'll see sort of the, the change. In addition, the state is requiring all municipalities to update their chart of accounts. So, this was just really, we were already looking at it, and it was just really a good time to make the changes in how the budget is presented with the, the various types of funds. So, after we made those changes to the fund types, here's a sort of a big picture pie of the 46.5 million that we're projecting we're going to have for expenditures next year. And sort of jumping directly into the, the high level of the general fund, revenues are projected to be $15.9 million next year. And as has been the case for us for as long as I've been here, the two biggest single sources of our general fund revenue are state shared revenue and our property taxes. So, looking at our big-ticket revenue items in the general fund, we take the projections that the state puts out every year, and we're projected flat for our state shared revenue for next year. As city manager dissents already referenced, we just don't have enough information on our property tax to, to budget something different, so that's coming across as flat for 2023. For our ARPA funds, basically, we recognize those as revenue when we commit the funds and then expend the funds. Excuse me. This budget has us using $784,000 of ARPA funds for the reconstruction of Town Center Parking Lot 3. If that's something the commission says that's an okay use of the funds, that would leave us approximately $1.8 million that we have to spend by the end of 2024. So, this budget assumes an unchanged millage of 16.25 mils. And we sort of break that down. We have one and a half mils that are dedicated to capital improvements, a half a mil that has traditionally been used for paying the bonds off on this building, which was redone in 2008. Those bonds are paid off this year. And so, what we're proposing to do is take that half mil, which is roughly $250,000, and start applying it towards storm sewer and storm sewer extensions. Last year, we got the results of the stormwater study, and so this is sort of, you saw it in the capital budget that we brought forward earlier, but we have a lot of long-term needs there on the storm sewer. The other piece that comes out of this is the voter-approved Act 345 police and fire pension. So, all of those things are the red part of it, and then what's in blue is what's left over with 16.25 mils, and that's what we really have for general operations. And since in the general fund, the primary thing that the general fund does is provide service. Basically, you'll see here, no surprise, the biggest chunk of the general fund is compensation and related benefits. And I think you're, you'll see that at any municipality you, you look at the general fund activity for. Another way of looking at the $16.6 million in the general fund is by division, and same thing, any, any municipality you go to, it's going to be public safety and community services. Again, just those services that we offer to the public are really the, the main cost drivers in the general fund. So, after running all the numbers through, we had to use approximately $383,000 of unassigned fund balance to balance next year's budget. That will leave us with an unassigned fund balance of approximately $2.8 million, which is 16.9% of expenditures. So, our policy says that we have to have at least 15% in the general fund, so we're in compliance with our, our policy. The 16.9% is a little bit lower than it has been historically, but as manager dissents mentioned, we're looking at ways and opportunities that we can, you know, get that up a little bit in, in future years. This budget in the general fund also assumes putting another $200,000 into the fire truck reserve. Probably, I don't know, what do you think, Paul? Midway next year, we're going to probably bring some rather large dollar-figure purchases for future fire truck or fire apparatus purchases to the city commission for consideration. And those are 18 months, two years, so we'll have to commit next year, basically, to buy, and then we'll get the equipment a couple of years down the road. We're projecting we're going to have a little over $626,000 at the end of next year for any economic initiatives that might be needed. Here is just a brief overview of the projects that are going to be funded by the 1.5 dedicated mills for next year. For our street funds, the most expensive items that we always have are our reconstructs and our overlays. So, these are the reconstruction and overlay projects that we have planned for next year. At the airport, we're going to continue with our taxiway A rehab, and basically, this is a reconstruction project. It's projected to cost about $2.8 million. And of that, the city is on the hook for 5% share, which is roughly $140,000. The rest of it comes from state and federal grants. At the WRF, next year, we're continuing with the Phase 1 of the plant rehab. We're anticipating about $6 million worth of construction next year. Solid waste is pretty much status quo. We plan on continuing our no-fee brush pickup twice per year. That's been a very popular program. I think we've been at it six or seven years now, and every year we fill the slots up. So, it's a great program to help get the community cleaned up. In water, we have our normal operations, and then they're doing about 670,000 in infrastructure projects. So, every year with the fees and charges, staff basically looks at everything that we have a fee or a charge for, and we go back to, in 2017, the city commission developed a fee policy, and so we go back to that policy to say, is there anything, any fees that we need to update, anything we need to change? And this year, the only thing that we're recommending are water and sewer increases. Water, and this is for, this would be for the average household, so a 5/8 inch meter. Water would be $3.85 per month, and WRF would be $1.59. And in both funds, this is really being driven by large capital expenditures. Even with those rather sizable increases, what we do every year is we compare ourselves to the, basically, the surrounding communities that have similar systems, so water and sewer. And even with our rates, which show at the bottom there, with the increases, we'd be at $53.61 a month. Even with that, we're cheaper than anybody else around us, in some cases by a lot, in my opinion. I don't think I've had Big Rapids water, but I've had water from all of the rest of the municipalities listed, and I believe ours is absolutely the best. So, these are things that are in the budget or going to be in the budget, and either we want more city commission input on some of these items to move forward, or there's just not enough information on some of these projects for us to move forward. For the ARPA funding, essentially, we need to decide, first of all, is the 784,000 that we have for Town Center, is that something the commission wants to move forward with? What other things do we want to use the ARPA funds for? And that's about $1.8 million that we're going to have to spend by the end of 2024. For the GKB pathway, due to grants, the timing, partnerships with Union Township, how far do we take the trail to the north, et cetera? There's nothing in this budget for that project. We want to get more information, more details, and then we're going to bring something back in 2023 for the city commission to consider. As I mentioned earlier, the storm sewer, just making sure that, you know, it's, it's clear to the commission, the public, that this budget proposes taking the half mil that had been used for the Borden Building and applying it to the storm sewer projects that need to happen. This budget does not have anything in it for downtown parking, so if the commission desires to see something different with parking, something different with enforcement, then we'll have to have a discussion about that and, and make a, either change it this year for next year, or in 2023, we can discuss it more, we can amend the budget. So, just want to be clear that there's nothing currently in the budget for parking. Same thing with the housing goals. We've had the housing study now, and a couple of meetings ago, McKenna and Mr. Merdase presented the findings from that, and we had a discussion on that. Right now, there's nothing budgeted for next year, so we need to really figure out with the commission what outcomes you guys want to see, and then once we have that sort of nailed down a little bit better, then we can come back. These are the tools we have, these are the resources we have, and then we can really move forward with figuring out how we can address housing needs. Additionally, our recreation program or recreation staff are going to reach out to CMU and try to come up with basically a partnership where we can do a recreation needs assessment. Over time, you know, programs are more popular, less popular, and it's just sort of, they're at the point where they really want a program for the next 10 years, and so they're, they're trying to really get the community input on what programs people want to see in the community. Next steps for the budget, we have a work session tonight. Two weeks from now, we have another work session on the budget, so we have anything we don't get through tonight. If commissioners have any questions, we'll answer those that night. And do we just ask that you get any questions that you have to city manager dissents by the 17th, so we have a few days to gather data, get any information that we, we need to come up with? We're recommending that you set a public hearing for November 14th on the budget, and then the charter requires that we adopt the budget by the last meeting of the year. And so, with that, that's a high-level overview, and any questions?
Commissioner Bush?
I, I'm seeing a lot of overlap between especially some of these questionable items that you're asking for feedback on and some of the applications that were made for tribal grants. That program and that generous contribution from Sacagawea Indian Tribe, I know from my experience in the school district, that is a huge make or break point for whether or not we pursue certain projects or make a priority for certain projects. So, in, in terms of, you know, our discussion as a commission, I think a lot of it might depend on, on what, what gets approved, what we want to prioritize, which we don't normally know until about the second or third weekend Thanksgiving, or it's right around Thanksgiving, I remember.
Correct.
Just, so just spitting that out there.
Did we get the list of what we were going to present to the tribe? Of what we, because we all had given five that we wanted, top five, do we have?
Yeah, I can make sure I get the, the total top five out. I think a lot of people had a lot of the same ones, as I recall. So, but I can give you the total top five for that. Also, maybe in reference to Commissioner Bush's question or concern here, given the timing of that grant, it would be very hard then to start making budget adjustments, let's say in December. So, I think that's probably something that we'll have to just keep in the back of our minds going into 2023 and make an amendment during that fiscal year.
Fair. Any other questions? Vice Mayor.
This is just a personal comment, but the, the GKB pathway, I picked up a couple maps last time when I was, had the opportunity for biking, and ours that we have available are really piecemeal and shoddy. It would be really nice to get that as something that gets part of the budget eventually.
Yep. Yep, I agree.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? I know that putting together a budget is not the easiest thing to do.
It's kind of fun, it's fun for anybody, I actually find it to be quite fun, so.
Yeah, but even, it doesn't matter if you have $5 or 5 million, right? You still have to figure out where everything goes.
Yep.
Yeah. And we appreciate all the work that you guys do. Okay, so we have, we will have another work session on the 24th. So, if you, as you are looking over the budget, if you have any questions, any line items that you'd liked a little further discussion on, make sure that you send those questions to manager dissents by the 17th, so that when we have that work session, they will be ready for those questions to answer them. Yeah, we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, if there's no more questions, comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
My second.
All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those no's, all those opposed no. We are adjourned.